Hey, everybody. I think this one is gonna be a little weird in that Jonathan is not gonna make it towards, until the end of the work sessions. Steve Davis is not gonna be here, Tony's not gonna be here, and Ingrid's gonna be five minutes late.
Okay, okay, so we can go ahead and start, though. We have a quarter.
And... I just figured I had to get that out, or everybody would be confused.
Yeah, that sounds good.
We actually don't...
Background on P&amp;Z before we start interviewing. But just like, I think Mr. Shavers in the waiting room.
Yes.
Where he's at. Just let him know if you can't hear us, what's going on.
Okay. Get Ingrid here? Okay.
It's just 'cause she's...
Okay. Yeah, it's, uh, we might wanna go ahead just to keep going on time. And I know Ingrid is, probably knows George Shaver. We all do, from having worked with him. So we can go ahead and kinda start the conversation, and... How's that sound? Deborah, you have your hand up? Okay, do I have control, or can we move, uh...
George is in.
In there, George is in there, okay. So, um, I guess, why don't we go ahead and, George, you've, did you get your video on? You'd like us to be able to see you? I can't see him yet. George, there's a button in the bottom left-hand of the screen to turn the video on, if you'd like to do that. And I think you are unmuted. Yep.
Come to Zoom, enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
And maybe he's calling in.
George, your audio should be working, you shouldn't need to call in.
Enter your participant ID, followed by pound, otherwise just press pound to...
George, can you hear us? There... There should be a place where you can unmute yourself, although I'm showing you as unmuted.
He's muted again.
Now he's muted again. Okay. And is your volume up on your computer?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, and we can see you, great, welcome.
Okay, I don't know if it's through the phone or through the computer, but one or the other.
It looks like it's through the computer, yeah.
Okay.
How are you this evening?
I'm well, how are you all?
Great, great, and thanks for reapplying, for planning and zoning. Um, yeah, thanks for doing the interview. I guess, I don't really have a specific set of questions or anything. And unfortunately, Ingrid is going to be, Ingrid Wusso will be a little bit late this evening. And the mayor, Godis, will be late this evening also. He had something else going on, um, for a couple of hours this evening. So, um, why don't you start off? I have read through your application and everything, but do you wanna go ahead and just summarize, why you'd like to remain on P&amp;Z for another four years?
Well, there's, uh, you know, there's always things happening and ongoing, and, um, you know, one, one being the comp plan, that's going to be, uh, redeveloped, and I'm anxious to be a part of that. I think, if I understand correctly, John has gotten some, um, funding, grant funding, to do, um, some work, some background work, in preparation for, for developing that comp plan. And, um, yeah, I think that'd be a real interesting process to, to be involved with.
Great, and I certainly think that your experience and background knowledge on the, on the plan would be helpful with that. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to any other, are there city councilors that have some questions for George?
Yeah, I... I'll just start, Paula, and then I just have really a couple of questions. First of all, I'll disclose, I've known George since he was young. I was, I was always been all but charged with that. We talked to her for 40, yeah, 40 years or so, so I've got a lot of faith in George and his judgment. George, what's, what, there's a, right now, there's a, there's a discussion going on about growth versus no growth in Glenwood. Any view on that, from your point of view, whether we try to clamp down, say, we're not gonna allow any more development, or if, if we allow it, should there be a limit in how we do that? Any thoughts on that, um, from your point of view?
Well, I, no, I don't think that we should be clamping down on, on growth. I know there's a lot of momentum toward, um, increasing our, our affordable housing. And I think there's some good opportunities to do that in Glenwood. Particularly the Eighth Street Crossing area, I think, with a public-private partnership. I think that there's maybe the best opportunity that I know of in town, at, uh, through that location, and through that, um, partnership. But, um, you know, I know Shelley had a meeting a few, a year or so ago, said that the one thing she hears the most of is, from people, is wanting to have affordable housing in Glenwood, or, or housing for, you know, their offspring and families and so forth. So, um, you know, but I think, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that, um, grant funding might answer a lot of that, and see what the community is thinking about, which I think would be really valuable information, uh, to have.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. That was, you know, my primary thing, I'm very morally comfortable, George, and will be supporting you for reappearance, so. Paul, I think you had questions, I kind of jumped in heavy or something.
That's okay, that's all right, you ask questions that I like, that's good. Hi, George, how are you? I think this is the first time we've actually, in a sense.
Yeah, perhaps.
Other than being in some meetings together when we did joint P&amp;Z and housing and stuff. Um, so that's really where my questions were, and you've kind of addressed them a little bit, is this idea of not only changing, um, the comp plan, but what do we do with the P&amp;Z code? And, and what steps do we do to move forward, working in coordination with the Housing Commission and, and P&amp;Z, on making some changes right away to accommodate affordable housing? I just, you addressed it a little bit on how you feel about that, it sounds like you're pretty positive, in the sense of wanting, um, some action taken. So really, my question is, answered a bit by what you said previously, but just if you could explore that a little bit more on, not only the comp plan, but what you think we could do with, um, our code, uh, to make some changes?
Well, um, one thing that we've discussed was density bonuses, uh, in the past. And I was initially pretty skeptical about those. But the more I learned about it, the more I thought about it, I was, I felt that there's a good potential for, um, helping to solve some of our housing problems through a density bonus. Whether it's through, uh, commercial development and allowing, you know, employee housing as a part of that, encouraging that through a density bonus, or, um, in, you know, in just general residential development. And I think there's some potential to, to, um, make a component of that that interfaces with our public transportation. In other words, allowing a density bonus in an area of town that has good, uh, public infrastructure, or, or availability of, of public transportation. And tying those two together, we had, um, one of our meetings most recently, we talked with some of the people in the Transportation Department, and, and it didn't seem like there was much that we could do. But I think there might be something that way, um, through the density bonus process. We've also been talking about...
Hold on one second, Alyssa, I don't know if you see, Ingrid's in the waiting room, can we let her in? Go ahead, George.
You know, we've also been, had, most recently, discussions about ADUs and ADU regulations, and, um, there's, you know, we haven't really, I think we've just more or less brushed the surface on that again. We've had discussions in the past, I, Ingrid, and, um, you know, I think that there's more that can be done along those lines that will help, help out. I also think that there's, um, a possibility of working through, um, you know, one of the things we, we were somewhat frustrated with was, um, the recent bank development downtown. I know that brought a lot of controversy. And, um, you know, from a P&amp;Z standpoint, or zoning standpoint, we were somewhat limited on what we could do to try to bring that into an appropriate development within the downtown area. And I think with some coordination with the, uh, DDA, that we could make some progress, to try to make sure that doesn't happen again.
My, my last question is, is, this is kind of a vision question, and bar, you know, not taking into account legalities, and who can do what. What, what's your vision of what we could do in West Glenwood in the, in the mall area? As a city, just curious on...
That's an easy question. Boy, I don't know that I have a...
I just want a picture in my head of what you see.
I don't know that I have a real, real good vision on that. You know, and quite honestly, I'm not real clear on where the city stands with this whole arrangement with the owner, and I can't even remember what it's called, so, um, I'm sorry, I don't have a real good answer for that. Pardon me?
It's like Urban Renewal Authority, is I think is what it is. It gives us certain kinds of powers, although temporarily, they've been suspended, so.
Oh, is that right? Yeah. You know, I, I know, in, I think it's in Seattle area, um, some of the, there's a mall there that they, and I don't know if this works in Glenwood or not, but they had redeveloped it into, um, sort of a, um, not a food court scenario, it was higher-end restaurants. And it's way out in West Glenwood, so I don't know that that makes any sense for us, you know, when we're trying to develop our, um, our tourism industry more in the central core. But I thought that was an interesting, um, solution that they came up with. So, a lot of restaurants moved in, and they created a really vibrant, uh, economy through that. So maybe there's something else, something outside of the restaurant industry, something outside of the tourism vein that, uh, might work, other than retail, seems to be dying.
Thanks.
In our mall.
Thank you, George, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a really good comment there, and we are getting short on time here. I wanna save enough time for our next, um, to talk to Amber also, so, but I will give Ingrid a chance. Ingrid, did you have questions for George?
You know, honestly, having been on the commission with him, George, all I can give you is compliments. In just feeling like you are so thoughtful, and you don't bring a lot of ego to the, to the meetings. You bring a lot of really good questions, and a lot of integrity for just your goals for the city. And your questions are always so thoughtful and spot-on, so I really appreciate what you bring.
No, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Great, thanks, Ingrid, and I, and I don't really have comments to add. I think Paula and Charlie covered my questions, but I'll echo Ingrid's comments, that P&amp;Z meetings that I have watched, you do, you, you bring a good perspective from the builder's standpoint, and, um, I really appreciate your thoughtful, thoughtfulness on the board. So, thank you, George, for reapplying, and thanks for being here tonight.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Thanks for your work, appreciate it.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye, have a good night.
Thank you.
Is, can Amber be promoted to a panelist? Thanks.
Hi, Al, can you see, can you see and hear me?
Hi, Amber, yes, we can, how are you this evening?
Pretty well, how are you guys?
Great, great, we will kick this off, um, again, a lot of us are familiar with your work on P&amp;Z, so thank you so much for reapplying, and we just want to, I'm gonna give some of the councilors, uh, other councilors' chance to ask questions, and, but do you wanna start off by just giving us a quick, little, short, thoughts on why you want to continue to serve on P&amp;Z?
Oh, sure, well, as probably all of you know, I got on the commission kind of after I wasn't elected, so maybe a path towards learning more about the city and how things go, if I ever wanted to be on council again. Hi, are you seeing patients?
Yeah.
Oh, can I stay here? Sorry, I'm borrowing our, someone's office, um. And so it's been a real education, I can tell you, I lucked out, because I came in onto the commission, like, a, a third of the way through the code revision. And so, from someone who doesn't have any experience in this realm, personally or professionally, that was a really great time to be able to, uh, get caught up and learn the language, and have, be in meetings where people were talking about it really candidly, in a way that you can't talk about necessarily during a, a real, um, public, open meeting. So, I really lucked out in that, and that was my first kind of section, part of being on Planning and Zoning. As you know, this is my hometown, and I love it, and so having a chance to shape, um, help shape what happens is obviously a passion of mine, so, um, I guess that's why I continue to serve, if, if chosen.
Great, great, thank you. So, does anybody have questions for Amber? Who would like to go first?
Well, I'll let you start.
Can I ask your questions?
Sure, I find...
So, I just wanted to, so we've been, um, 'cause I've been on council, um, there's been a, I would say, a, uh, quite a, a number of council people that have been kind of pushing what we could do as far as accommodating more affordable housing. And I just wanted to get, um, your feelings about it, what you think could be done, and what you, um, what you like that's been done so far.
Well, I will confess, I have been in, in some of those meetings, and I'm not an expert, um, in affordable housing, and how that, the, all of the nuances of that, um, so I don't... As far as, can you reset your question about what's been done so far? Like, as far as projects that have been done so far, or efforts that have been done so far?
More along the lines of what P&amp;Z has been involved in, you know, we've looked at, um, we've had some joint housing and, um, P&amp;Z meetings, and how we could change the code. This might come up with the comp plan, what can we reinstate that might have fallen off, um, in the, you know, that were part of the, the code previously, like, um, you know, deed-restricted housing and that type of stuff. So, I just wanted to get a sense of what you feel, out of all the different things that we've been looking at, whether it's, um, density, or, um, you know, I think something that's coming up, or has been discussed recently, is allowing more than one ADU, or changing the restrictions on ADUs. I just wanted to get a feeling from you on how you feel about the whole thing of moving in that direction for the city, and then if you have some ideas moving forward.
Yeah, um, well, I can tell you from my own personal experience, we have an ADU, and it's, it's essentially our ticket to being able to live in this town. If we didn't have that income, we wouldn't be able to have, um, we live in Cardiff Glen, in case you didn't know. And so, it's a real, it's the real ticket that we have to be able to live in that, in our house, in Cardiff Glen, in Glenwood. And so, I, I can see that as a real path for other people too, especially when we're talking about the kind of people that we wanna have in Glenwood, is, you know, families, and young professionals, and people who live and work here. And so, as far as ADUs, I can see that as a real pathway to bridge that gap for people, if, from an income perspective. As far as, from a project perspective, I don't love huge, monstrous projects. I would like to see, is, and I know, and there's more, um, of like, an idea of what would be like a neighborhood with mixed, mixed kinds of, more mixed kinds of housing than condos, or apartments, or whatever, or even large, single-family homes. I, I envision that if we can, you know, if we're redeveloping, or developing it all, that we, something looks like, like Glenwood Park, for, per se, where you have some townhomes, some condos, some duplexes, some larger, single-family homes, and it creates a neighborhood, it also creates a, a way for, for growth from your starter condo, to, you know, be able to grow into maybe a single-family home that you raise your family in. And so I think that can be, in a same neighborhood, and you're staying with your same, you know, family and friends, so I think that could be a path that way.
Great.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thanks.
Amber, kind of, kind of a follow-up to that, and, and you know, being a native of Glenwood, you, you've seen it grow from, you know, you know, several thousand to, oh, probably 10,000s or projecting. There is some pushback that I hear from time to time, about we should go into no growth, we shouldn't allow any other growth, any other projects. What, what do you think of that, as someone who's lived here all your life?
Well, that...
This is not a trick question.
Yeah, it's hard, it's, it is a tricky, I keep that all the time, too, because I, I mean, I grew up in a small town, and I, I don't know that I'm raising my kids in a small town anymore, you know, um. I don't necessarily think that it's in the best interest of Glenwood to continue down the path of being the bedroom community for everyone up valley, and we just build a bunch of shitty things just to house people, because we have, that's, that's, you know, where, who we are as a town. So, I would tend, I would probably tend to lean toward either on the no-growth, slow-growth side, or, you know, instead of, let's just build all the housing that we can, and see how many people we can cram into this valley. Does that answer?
Yeah, no, that, that, I appreciate that, that's, I was just curious, because it's almost out of curiosity from somebody who's been here a long time, I mean, I mean, I've probably been here longer than you have alive, but I, I don't wanna talk about it, I don't know how old I am. The, uh, the other, the other, when you tie into what you said, what do you think about A Street Crossing and developing, you know, with Paul was talking about, maybe some kind of mixed-use housing, affordable, or employee housing, I don't know what, workforce housing, I'm sorry, that's the word I'm looking for, what, what's your thought there?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly see the need, and also from a, from a person who is, uh, works in a small business, where all of my coworkers, except for one, travel to get, to get to work. I think it's needed, I feel nervous about where it's, where it's, I don't know, have any concept of what it's gonna be, or what it's gonna look like, I feel nervous about its proximity to such, to our, to the river, and that area of town, that's such a precious resource, and I don't want us to mess this up.
I think our vision, at least my vision, I can't say our, but my vision would be, A Street Crossing is more across the city hall, and along the river, it may be different developments, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate your answers.
Charlie, do you have any other questions, or we have about five minutes left. I'd like to let Ingrid ask a question, if she'd like, or two. Ingrid?
Amber, thank you so much for reapplying. So my first question is, is mostly just because you do bring a different voice than a new applicant. What are ways that you feel like we can better educate Planning and Zoning commissioners, that we can have a better dialogue between, um, council and planning and zoning? What are, what are some identified deficiencies that you feel like this is a great forum for you to... How can we all be better at our jobs?
Yeah, I don't, that's a hard question for me to answer, because I still, I know that there's like, that, that fine line between what you guys can know about, you know, what, what you can know about what we're, I'm not articulating this well, that fine line between the communication between Planning and Zoning and council, so that it stays, and it has integrity. So I don't know that I know the answer to that.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Um, then my next question would be, what do you think you bring to the Planning and Zoning Board that's different than the other members? Like, what voice for the community, what do, what do you think you're bringing? And what would you like this next term to be for, for you, and what you bring to the commission?
I think what I bring to the commission is, um, I don't have any, a single vested interest in any, uh, in anything that's happening outside of planning, in, in planning and zoning in my real life. So I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not a builder, I'm not a, I don't do loans, or, you know, I don't, I don't have, I work in a dental practice, and I'm, you know, raise my kids. So I think that what I bring is that separateness of, from like, being in the, in the game, in the industry, to just being a hometown girl who doesn't wanna see shitty things happen to it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think that's a great answer, and in fact, you know, having sat next to you for those few years, I, you know, I always reminded myself that Planning and Zoning is a layman board. It, it doesn't, we're not looking for experts in their fields. And I think sometimes, when we get on there, 'cause I, I mean, I was in real estate, but I didn't have an expertise in land use. Um, and I think that, that over the years, I have seen you really be a really great listener. And I would encourage you to never be shy to express your, your opinions, be more vocal, and, and let us know, because I think that passion for Glenwood, just Glenwood on a whole, without an agenda, is so incredibly important, but I really value that you want to continue to do this, and that you have a goal of just continuing to serve our community, it's pretty awesome.
Oh, thank you, thank you for serving our community, well, thank all of you, actually, why you're, why you're, why we're on it. I know it's a mostly a thankless job.
Well, great, thanks, Ingrid, yes, and I'll, and I'll echo that, Amber. I think too, it's, yeah, not everyone has to have specific land use background, or... I think too, it's, yeah, not everyone has to have specific land use background or building and that to be on this board. I think it is important to have a voice of a resident and a young, working professional and mother and a person raising kids in this community. You know, like you said, we want, we want to keep this community as a place where you want to raise your family. So that's an important voice to have on the board. And certainly the land use development and the comp plan and things like that can have an influence on how we grow as a city and how that affects our quality of life. So that's an important voice. And, and again, thank you very much for stepping up again and applying for another term. And, and I think unless anyone has any other questions or if you have any final comments, Amber, we're just about out of time. So.
Well, I just had a thought that would circle back to, to what Paula said about maybe changes in the code. One thing that's rushing to my mind is right now that is we need to do whatever is required that the AMB bank thing doesn't happen again. Where we, whatever, so if we do that with the code or do that with whatever, I think that we need, that was, obviously we were behind the eight ball on that and no one really, it wasn't really anticipated, but I think we need to think about things like that. Like we don't want maybe one industry lining all of our city blocks. So that would be one thing I think we should work on and maybe sooner rather than later, so that we don't get stuck with it again inadvertently.
Yeah. And I think that's a good point and knowing whether, you know, does that direction need to come from council to address that? Or does P and Z want to work on that and make recommendations? We'll get a, a way, how to approach that. Deborah, I see Deborah's hand up. Deborah?
I was just making sure that you acknowledged Jen, because she has something to tell you about tonight's agenda item on planning commission.
Oh, good. No, I did not see Jen's hand up. Jen, is your hand up? Jen, please speak.
I was working up to it. I turned my camera on and then I was. So I just wanted to let you know that Beatrice has given us her resignation sadly for, for P and Z. And so there are actually three positions then on the P and Z. And Joy, who you interviewed a few meetings ago, has expressed her interest in having a full seat. And I don't know if Gretchen heard back from Pete Waller about whether he was interested in a full seat, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. We can certainly set that decision over for the next meeting as well, but I just wanted to give you that information.
Great. Well, I was like bummed about that. I was looking forward to getting to know her.
Yes.
I think we're all sad that that didn't work out. I think it's another voice we need on our boards of commissions and the Hispanic community and that. So. But I just want to take a second, Amber. Thank, thank you for volunteering and doing this. You know, it's hard when you have little kids. It's hard enough when you're old, but it's easier to learn when you have little kids. So I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Amber. And it's exciting for Beatrice that they were able to purchase a home. So.
Yeah, it is. That's a big deal.
Yes, yes. So thank you, Amber, very much. And we will, we will be, I think, making appointments tonight. So. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night.
Bye.
You too.
Okay, next up, we have a work session with the River Commission. So do we want to promote some of them over? Let's see, I see Ashley Moffett, I see a bunch of them in our attendees. Do we want to promote them all over to panelists? We have Joel Shute, Erica Gibson, Chris Treese, Chad Rudow, Ashley Moffett. Can all of them be promoted?
Might be an applicant for the airport board. So I don't know if he needs to come over yet, does he?
Oh, do we have a, are we doing an interview for that?
No, I don't think so.
I just had planning and zoning on my, on my agenda.
Just an interviews for planning and zoning. You're correct.
Okay, okay. Okay, no worries. I'm confused all the time. So.
See. Shelley, could you, oh, looks like you did. Chris Treese, thank you.
Okay.
And, and Scott Schreiber.
Great.
What about Chad, Trent?
Chad, Chad is a frequent attendee, but not an official commissioner.
Okay. And there's a phone number there. I'm, I'm not sure if that's a commission member or someone in the audience. Do you know, Trent?
I can't say, but I'll, I'll see if I can.
The nine four five.
Search that number.
Okay. Okay. So this is our work session with the River Commission and Steve Davis and I are liaisons to the River Commission. And so it's nice to have this once a year or so opportunity just to sit down and go over their goals and, and priorities for the year. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Trent, and then to the, or to the commission, Ashley Moffett is chair of the commission. So whoever wants to start it off, go ahead. I'll let you guys lead the conversation. We have about, we have until about 4:15. So.
Thanks, Shelley. And I, I think our chairman, Ashley Moffett, is going to lead the discussion and others will jump in as need be. And Ashley, feel free to share your screen if you'd like at any point.
Thanks, Trent. And council, on behalf of all of the River Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to meet with us today. Like Trent said, just to keep things efficient and given our online format, I'll be leading the way. But know that it is a, a group collective effort. We've got a great, great team. And I have to say that, I'm speaking on their behalf. I would say that, for all of us, water is a passion both in our professional lives and on our personal lives. So it's a, it's a great team to work with. And I am going to take just a minute and introduce, it looks like we've got Paula, Charlie, Shelley, Ingrid here. Okay, just in case you haven't got a chance to meet some of us. We've got Scott Schreiber, he's the vice chairman. He's a water resource engineer from Right Water Engineering. We have Brendan Leganhausen, who's also a water rights engineer now with the Colorado River District. We have Ryan Davis, who's a professional fly guide with Hookers Fly Shop. We've got Chris Treese, who's living the life as a retired former manager of external affairs of the Colorado River District. We've got Erica Gibson, who is a water attorney with Falcon Green. Elise Osagna, I don't know if I ever say her last name right. Anyway, she's a community science manager with the Aspen Global Institute. And we've got Joel Shute, who is a data and operations manager for Pine Dell Natural Gas. So we have a really well-rounded group of people that look at our tasks and duties for the River Commission from varied professional and personal experiences. It's great. Oh, and I guess, Charlie, you pointed out Chad being on the call but not invited up. Chad and with the Roaring Fork Water Conservancy District and Kyle with the River Guide Alliance. Gosh, I think they make it to almost every meeting and provide us with great expertise as well. So I think Trent passed out an agenda to all of you, kind of laying out what we're going to do today. We thought we'd start by sort of highlighting what we did in 2020, look ahead to what we have planned for 2021. And then open it up to you guys to get some feedback and guidance on where you'd like to see the River Commission go. So before jumping into accomplishments and where we're going, I think it's helpful to see our matrix. So I am going to share my screen really quick. So this matrix is on the River Commission's page on the city's website. And we created this, gosh, I think about a year or two ago. And sort of the focus of this matrix is to take our outlined duties and powers and sort of break it into these key areas of interest. And then within those key areas, we sort of developed then things that were, we've looked at in the past, things we want to keep on our radar, things that we're working towards. And then we move things over into an action item list. And this is really what helps us focus. You know, each commissioner then takes on one or two of these tasks and tries to move the ball forward. And we found that this way has really kept us on task and kept us organized in what we're trying to sort of look at and, and help with. So you can kind of get a flavor here of sort of the main categories, you know, education, water quality, riparian ecosystem, water rights, boat ramps, access, river access and mapping, city parks and open space, the confluence, fall plantings and river fest. So you guys can, can pick up the details at your leisure on our website. But I wanted to kind of highlight, you know, 2020, obviously for all of us was an interesting year with COVID. But I think even given some of the limitations we had, the commission really, really accomplished a lot. So in the, in the field of education, one of our goals has been to really improve our public outreach, to get out there and let the public know what we're doing and what we're about, to sort of help facilitate, you know, what we can provide then to the council. We had originally hoped to have these events in person. We successfully were able to get two of them in an online format. One was related to riparian health and then the one that was just two weeks ago was focused on the Grizzly Creek fire. We found that this forum, while not our initial, you know, preference, has been great. We've gotten, I think Trent told me, over 13,000 views, 1,300, sorry, 1,300 views. But we've gotten a lot of great feedback from the community. I know I've had coworkers that have popped in and found them to be really educational. Oh, thanks, Trent. And then we've also, we also worked towards, we continued our efforts with the riparian ecosystem. And Trent, I apologize. I know I'm going a little off script on yours because I kind of set my thinking up and how we had our matrix. So we'll jump around a little bit, but for the riparian ecosystem, we continued our efforts in getting the adoption of a riparian setback, which we were successful in, thanks to many of you. And we also, with that effort, created a planting guide. We sort of stole this from some work that people have done in Vail, but it's a cool pamphlet that really highlights the type of plantings that do well in our environment and then what is good for that riparian zone. You know, I think a lot of times people think of like two or three things that they can plant along the river's edge. And there's, you know, hundreds of different types of species. So putting the guide together was an important piece of that public outreach as well for us. So those are ready to go. We were waiting for the final adoption of the city's code, which is going to be added to that pamphlet. And then that'll be available everywhere that you would locally shop for plants here. So Lowe's, you know, Alpine Gardens, Eagle Crest. In terms of city parks and open space, we made, we made a lot of progress on the Three Mile Confluence area. This was an area that had seen a lot of erosion and, and we were losing bank and property. And the River Commission was definitely instrumental in pushing the city to start addressing that. Scott's team over at Right Water Engineers has been working on the design plans, which not only addressed the issue of erosion, but they've also added a lot of features and elements that are going to help make that area better used. It's a much loved area. And I think the things that are being planned and hopefully constructed will make that a great city feature moving forward. And we did hear in our River Commission meeting this week that we were able to secure, I think it was a grant for 85,000. Trent, just nod your head. Towards, yeah, towards the construction. So making progress there. In terms of some of the events that we did, we did a fall planting. This has been our third year. We did our first one two years ago at Veltis. Then we did a planting on the Raymond property, which is just downstream of the Red Mountain Passage. And we went back to Veltis again this year. In total, we've now planted just under 800 plants at Veltis Park, which is awesome. And we've had, this year it was just limited to, you know, the, the River Commissioners and their families. But previously we've had great public support in helping to do that. Next year or this coming year, I think we're planning to go shift our efforts to Two Rivers Park and start adding some vegetation along the wall. And then finally, we, we had a successful River Fest. COVID limitations, you know, prohibited us from having our usual party and celebration. But we had a good turnout of people getting out, getting with their families and collecting trash along our riverbanks. So I'll, I'll just kind of take a pause real quick to see if you guys have any questions or comments on what we did last year before kind of diving into where 2021 takes us.
Ashley, I, I'd just like to echo quick, just for the benefit of the rest of council, because, you know, you guys aren't involved in these meetings every month, but I'll have to say that, as Ashley mentioned and introduced everybody, we just have fantastic expertise on this board. And not only that, but they are all passionate about the rivers and out on the rivers a lot and active. And these people know water rights and ecosystems and watersheds and water law. And it's really, we're very fortunate to have this River Commission working for us and they're, they're an active group. And I think really pushing our rivers to the forefront with the education and everything that they're doing. So I just want to stress that and I can't be thankful enough that everybody's on board. Deborah, hand up.
I wanted to give Trent a second to tell you what that grant funding actually was. We were saving this for it to be a surprise. So Trent, take it away.
Yeah, and I was hoping to have a little bit more information for you today. So we applied for three grants for the implementation of construction projects that came out of the Three Mile Confluence Comprehensive Planning and Design that actually Scott Schreiber's firm, Right Water Engineers, won the, the contract for. So, you know, being heavily involved in that is also being a neighbor was, was beneficial to us. But I was hoping that I might hear some information about a, another grant that's kind of was submitted concurrently for another $85,000 to complete some of that work. We'll hear more on that probably by mid-March. So, you know, ultimately those two grants, as well as some, some money that Deborah put forth towards the project to kind of help as some seed money for grant applications, would be all put together and, and would make up approximately half of the estimated costs for the total project. You know, it, it, we always thought that we would have to find the money someplace to get implementation and construction, but it's a huge, you know, start and, you know, it's kind of the way that the, the blocks fall. You know, you get some bit of work done, you get more community involvement, you get more hopefully elected official interest. And we go get closer to that completion of the project.
Great. Thanks, Trent.
No, and as we're, as we're giving praise, we should heap some onto Trent because he does a lot of heavy lifting for this commission and is a great liaison between us and what's happening at the city. Trent's, Trent's our guy. But great news on that front. And, and when we're talking about funding and this has been one of our success stories in being able to get these grants to, because I think we started with the Healthy Rivers Grant from Pitt King County that, you know, Brian Smith, because we work quite a bit with the Parks and Rec Commission. I know he sort of helped go to. I know he sort of helped go to the initial meetings for that. And if, if, you know, having Deborah's here a little bit today, if we can find ways that we can creatively get funding, because our group is motivated to get things done. You got a bunch of people that are in professions that, you know, we have a plan and we want to see it through. And if we had avenues to be able to try to get funding that we could facilitate to these things, we're, we're all ears.
Thank you. And yes, I'm very excited about this grant because it also helps get rid of, eventually, I think the green, what I call the swamp area along Okanagan Central, which will be wonderful.
That's one of the goals of the project, I think.
No, that's definitely a goal. Okay, well then, just kind of running through a list of where, where we see our efforts being put in 2021. Again, kind of going a little rogue off of Trent's because I kind of was thinking the way our matrix works. But we're absolutely going to continue to push forward on our education series, continue to improve it. You know, our goal is still to do two a year. At one point, we were trying to be super ambitious and couple the presentation with a newspaper article. I think ideally that's still the goal, if we can do, do it in the, in the timeframe needed. We have commissioners that are going to stay involved in, in abreast to things that are happening with the Grizzly Creek Fire Recovery. You know, we have Chad, our liaison from the Roaring Fork Water Conservancy District, who also is tied to a number of these groups. So we're kind of collaborating. We would like to work towards getting the, you know, sort of continuing forward with the riparian setback. Adoption is maybe working towards getting that ordinary high watermark mapped through town. We're also going to continue along those sort of riparian habitat, water quality concerns, keep monitoring MS4 regulations. We plan to review and provide comment on the latest city water rate study. We plan to work with city staff from Parks and Rec, as well as planning, and possibly with the local chamber on putting together a river access map. We've done some initial work on that and it's just needs to get into a more finalized, polished state. And then, you know, continue to monitor the South Bridge plans and construction. You know, this commission has looked at several times the potential opportunity of having a boat ramp out there. Is that feasible in the current configuration of the project? Or should we be looking at other potential areas to add a boat ramp? Continue to monitor the redevelopment process near the confluence and how that would interplay with some of the recent riparian initiatives. And then continue to monitor the city and rafters move study. In particular, the piece of that study that contemplates bringing traffic closer to the river. And then, of course, we will have our fall planting and summer River Fest. Hopefully we can invite more public and have more celebration. We'll just see how the, how the year shakes out. So that's, that's really all I had in terms of where we were going. Open it up to council now to kind of give us feedback and guidance or other fellow river commissioners if they'd like to chime in.
And if people could, if you'd like to speak, yeah, please put your, raise your hand and then I'll try to go in order here. Deborah, did you have something to add quick? Okay, okay, your hand's still up. Ingrid.
Hey, thank you guys so much for all the work you do. So I was actually, as you, a lot of you know, I recently appointed to council. So I know you more intimately on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you guys, I had you guys come and do an amazing presentations on the riparian setback. One of the things I noticed during that time was what a harder job you had because public information, I felt like the understanding for the community members, in particular, the ones that were along that area of, of the Roaring Fork, that they didn't understand their responsibility for being members of, you know, owning along that, that area. How can we work with you to make sure that we do more public information opportunities? How can we educate our community as what an important responsibility, in particular, the people who live along the river?
No, and that's a great observation, Ingrid, and definitely something that we heard. You know, we, we did our best. We met with several representatives, Gary Vick out on his property, Brendan and I, who was the former chair, and tried to talk through some of this stuff. We did invite them to some of our River Commission meetings and had them there. And I do believe, Trent, did we already send residents along the riverway the, the planting guideline? Or?
Not, not yet, but that is one of our things, or one of the actions I'm for this year is to distribute the, the completed guide to all of those property owners as part of the, another grant, PPO grant that we received for public education and outreach included the cost of publication, so.
Okay, and I want to, I'm super clear that the deficiency was not with the current River Commission, but probably decades before, where people who were buying along here didn't understand what they were buying into and that there was already a riparian setback existing. So when you made the change, it was both introducing them to the fact that they had a riparian setback in addition to the attempt to make the change to that. So, so thank you, guys.
Scott, did you comment on that too?
Yeah, I'll just tell you, I mean, I think this, this stuff is huge. I mean, public education outreach is probably one of the biggest things that we can do as part of a commission out here. And I think boots on the ground and building things and cleaning, that's awesome. That, that is, that is us, you know, doing what we're talking about kind of thing. And I think the idea, you know, the more we teach people about our rivers, how to take care of them, the more they can appreciate it, the more they realize that they are stewards. I mean, actually, we get, we do these all the time for different communities, but we build manuals. And they're called River Stewart's manuals and we hand them to the homeowners. The Conservancy has one, it's exactly what we developed sort of with our planting guide. And, you know, a lot of, all our projects we're starting to talk about now has some kind of signage element also too. So it provides that educational aspect as these people are going to these parks and look at Veltis and we'll have one down here at Three Mile also. I mean, it's, it's, it's the, the teacher person, the fish kind of element here. And the more we can get them on board and take ownership of what we're doing, the more it makes it, well, we're doing easy. And so I think that came across, go ahead, sorry, Ingrid.
Oh, I just said, that's what I thought. Like, I thought, gosh, this is, it's harder on you guys because we're missing these other elements.
Right. You know, we reached out for some funding to the PPO, to the Public Education, Public Outreach from the Roundtable. And I think that was great to move that forward with our planting guide. And we'll continue to do more of that. And this, it'll come even more having, you know, potentially as we start getting the MS4 regulations and the educational requirement associated with that, so we understand our stormwater controls. But, you know, I think we're just sort of ramping up right now and our speaker series is the biggest element of part of that. And so especially when we're, we're a board that really doesn't have funding, you know, a lot of what we can do is really just talk. And, but that's still a great element to get the information out there to people. And so I think there's also opportunities for anything that you guys think about what you're doing or what other groups are doing and how we can implement some educational piece would be huge. And we, we talked about this sort of sign collection throughout the town that we want to start in placing. And Veltis was a riparian one. Three Mile is going to be a spawning ground one. You know, maybe on the bridge would be a neat one about the hot springs and how that's intricate. And then, you know, maybe a water rights one somewhere else, but sort of these informative signs along our trail system. So people are getting educated as, as they're enjoying nature and, and they realize a little bit of why we're doing certain things. And so as part of the Three Mile project, I mean, we had an extensive public education outreach process. And we had a full day site visit down there where we explained to people why we were doing and what we were doing and we got their input. And I think we just need to continue to do that for every single project we have along the river and, you know, just really educate our, our people while, while we're doing what we're doing. They'll come along. I mean, it's, it's not rocket science. You know, it's all the bugs and bunnies, it makes you feel good kind of stuff. So, yeah, whatever we can do to help you guys, you guys help us or vice versa, however that works, we're here for you.
And then, well, and I'd just like to, oh, I just wanted to add that, you know, a lot of this speaks to the evolution, and I think you, you observed this too, Ingrid, the evolution of our commission. When I started on this commission, it was almost disbanded and put into Parks and Rec. And I think we really looked at ourselves and what our goals were, and that's where we've developed this matrix. And then we used to have people come in as these, these education pieces, just, just talking to us. And it was like, well, wait, why are we having these experts come in, talk to the five or six of us when we flip this around and make this something that is available to the whole public, that we're helping get out there? So I would say that that's why education is the first one on our matrix. And it is a huge piece that we're, yeah, we're, we're behind, but we're trying to ramp up and, and get to where we need to be.
Okay, great. And then before I pass, I have one more quick question. And that is, please don't be shy to ask us to establish like a meeting with other councils. Like if you, you know, Parks and Rec, or for some reason you feel like the DDA. Like, I believe that, you know, the power of collaboration, if there's an opportunity where you feel like you could benefit from having one of these shared dialogues where you guys could make some common goals and implement more, you know, on these lean budgets that we have, please don't be shy to make that request.
No, absolutely. And I, I know we, we definitely work back and forth with Parks and Rec quite a bit. But yeah, I know it would be good for us to, to have some cross, cross work, cross collaboration with the other commissions.
Great, great conversation. Paula, do you have some questions?
Pretty simple ones, actually. First of all, wow, with that round of introductions. Again, I'm just so impressed with this commission. You guys, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to do this for us in the town of Glenwood. So that first, but I could not, I don't know where the matrix is, Ashley. And I don't know if Trent or you could share that with the council after the meeting, just so that we have that. I kind of looked while you were talking on the Glenwood Spring site and I didn't see it anywhere. So if I, it would just be easy if you sent it. And then the other thing is, I was very lucky last year, even with COVID, I got to go out and pick up trash on the Deveraux side of the Colorado River. And I like those kind of opportunities. And I would just ask that when those things come up or the plantings come up, if you could make sure that the council knows about it, because I know I'm not the only one that likes to get out there and put our hands in the dirt. Sometimes it's good not to have to read, you know, many, many pages of documents and actually be out in the sunshine doing something good for this town. So if you can just make sure that we're aware of it, that would be great. That was it.
No, absolutely.
Great. Thanks, Paula. Charlie.
Thanks. I guess, I just question for the, the River Commission and any or all of you address. I mean, what, what can we do to help support what you guys are trying to do from a council level? I know when I was on boards, commission boards, I counsel, I was like, well, what you guys could do this for me. But is there anything else that we can do to help support your activities? I'm, I'm just impressed. I look quickly at that matrix as well. I'm just really impressed by the things you guys are doing.
I don't necessarily know how much we need support from council. It's, it's more like if there were things that you guys, you know, specifically wanted us to look at and it gets filtered through maybe Trent to kind of keep us sort of focused and tasked. You know, otherwise I think we're, we're pretty motivated with, with taking what we got and kind of running with it. So we would just be looking to you guys if you, you know, because you're, you're seeing everything that's coming in and we, our focus might be a little narrow. So if there's ways to get us to look at different things that you guys think is important for the, the city that relates to our powers and duties, by all means, reach out to myself or Trent so we can get it on the matrix.
Thanks. I, it just, only one comment I have, and then I see Chris got his hand up too, so we need to, but, like to hear. But, you know, I know one thing I, I thought about as I was listening to you and we've, we've been talking about some kind of a master plan or something in South Canyon. So even though it's not a river, there is water flow in there and, and how we might deal with it. So that we might be looking at you in the future. Thank you.
No, definitely, Charlie. I'll let Chris jump in. But we have seen from time to time some of the work that is happening out in South Canyon and definitely interested in how that gets developed.
Right. Chris, did you want to add?
Ah, I can, I can self unmute myself. Thank you. I was waiting to see that magically go away. Councilman Willman, that, that's really helpful. I appreciate you reaching out as well as all the other counselors here. Joining today is, is a big step that tells us that this is important to you and that you value this commission. Certainly your involvement, your commitment to the riparian areas and the issue around riparian areas. That was, that was a long pull. That lasted more than a year. And getting that across the finish line with the council wasn't unanimous, but that speaks to the importance of it as well as the council's commitment. And I think that it's that kind of, that told us that, that you have a commitment to the, the rivers and the riparian area. You know, there, there is always the question of money. If you're going to ask, how can you support us? We will always be asking for money for the next project. So we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that. But we also are mindful of the, the financial situation and the competition for money, even when it's more plentiful. The, we have ideas, you've seen some of those shared today. Counselor Stepp joined our meeting this week and mentioned that as part of her work with the Middle Colorado River, that they're looking at some common signage for river and river access and river recreation for tourists as well as locals. I thought that was brilliant. And when I say common, I mean, common up and down the river so that people know what to look for or know what they're looking at when they see a sign about the river. That's the sort of thing that, that input is really valuable and helps guide what we're, what we're doing. And certainly that your comment on South Canyon is there. We, we talked about South Canyon last year and probably need to be brought up to date on what's happening. And if you wish to send the, an initial responsibility of drafting a, a master plan or identifying the elements that are critical in a master plan our way, that would be something that I think this commission would be pleased to take on.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Any other questions from council or comments from Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, you know, obviously very much appreciate even just having this opportunity to be here. And first of all, I mean, we're a little bit at your beck and call also too. But I think, you know, what we're trying to, to show you, I mean, I think as long as we get activated under the right projects and the right circumstances, i.e. the big confluence that's coming up. And you guys realize, you know, that we do have some of the, the skills and the abilities to, to look out for our resources for the city is key. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to gain that trust and rapport with you currently right now. And, you know, I think that Chris's comment about, about the, the monetary aspect is, you know, I think it was really neat. You know, Deborah gave us 35K. I decided to remove that from my design team and took a risk and put it after a grant. And we're going to turn that into $300,000. And I think, you know, one of the elements that we really don't have a lot of funding out there for. And we, we've got funding for streets and, and other infrastructure and things like that. We don't have a river fund by any means or a stormwater fund as some of these have. But, you know, what we have is the heartstrings, you know, the rivers are lifeblood. And so we can actually garner funds from the community. And if we have a way to sort of allocate that money and store that money and then use that money for grants, I think that would be super cool. So if there's some kind of creative solution where we can start to do our own fundraising, to get our own money from all the community members, and then we can take that and we can times it by four for any grant we go after, that would be super awesome. I mean, a lot of times it's always like, all right, hey, guys, we don't, we don't need to get this much money for River Fest. We're sort of there. Stop, stop getting money. But if we can start to build a bank account, that would be so rad. So it just, that opportunity would be really, so thank you very much for that opportunity.
Thanks, Scott. And that is something for the council to know. That's come up a couple of times during the River Commission meetings. Is, is there a way, maybe this is a question for Carl and Deborah. Is there a holding fund or should they work through maybe a nonprofit? Or how could that work where there could be a fund set up that people, citizens could donate to? Or river enthusiasts or, you know, things like that?
You turned your camera on, Carl, so I figured you had something to say.
Yeah, I, I just figured somebody would ask me a question. But I, you know, I think that's something you probably should look at a segregated fund for. Clearly, you know, we could set up something internal to the city for holding that. Historically, we haven't held donations. It's just not in our, our wheelhouse. Traditionally, it wasn't in our wheelhouse. I don't know with, we've got a lot better systems in place now that we actually have a non-antiquated. Traditionally, it wasn't in our wheelhouse. I don't know with, we've got a lot better systems in place now that we actually have a non-antiquated um. Accounting system to track all of that. So I don't know. That's our, Deborah.
And I would say there's also um, Two Rivers Community Foundation has been used for those kind of similar initiatives in the past. And the benefit of that is it's, I think it's easier for people to wrap their heads around donating to a nonprofit than it is a city.
Right.
Very much so.
And then set up a specific fund within that group, a specific purpose.
I think they hold money for like the ice rink and for some park. Projects ish, and I think they were the ones that raised money if I heard correctly for the um, pool. Okay, and we built it ever how many years ago?
Maybe theater too and that art, yeah.
If we raise it lots of times, it just ends up in this line in the budget that 10 years later, nobody knows what it's for.
Right.
So that maybe that's.
Deborah, I know. I know on the financial advisory board, it's come up a couple of times about this issue about donating to the city and, and cooperating with Two Rivers Community Foundation. So I, I know that. In those discussions two or three years ago, that was being explored um, for grants and other types of reasons. So I, I think it is a viable thing.
Yeah, other than unless, I mean, the best thing would be spinning off. Something that was like, you know, river commission, a river named, but barring that, because it's not a small amount of work to create a nonprofit. I would suggest either the Two Rivers Community Foundation or the Chamber now is getting their nonprofit up and running.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? From the commission before, I have a, just a couple, but I'll let anybody else go first. Well, okay. Well, thank you all for being here. Again, it's, it's um, really a great board to work with as liaison and Trent does a great job and.
Does a great job.
I would really love to see us continue to support that education and outreach and that might be a, a place where council can inject a small amount of funding that would go a long way. Um, and also those, any projects that come along like the Three Mile Confluence or areas. You know, certainly we've, we've upgraded Two Rivers Park and I think we get a lot of good feedback. People love that. The work at Veltus Park, people have loved. So I think if we can really continue to find those areas along the river where. Our residents and people like to gather and access and use the river, if we can continue to improve those, I'd love to see, see that done and. Uh, see the council support that with funding as we can. And we always love to leverage money with grants, so. It's kind of a continuous process, but. Otherwise, um, that's all I have to say. Great job.
I just want to add, but one thing about Ken, Shelley, and that's that I just want to thank each and every one of you and including the members that aren't here for what you guys do for the city and. We don't operate without the volunteer organizations and boards and commissions that help us do our work. So I really do appreciate everything you guys are doing.
And I know this isn't intern, but it, it occurs to me, um, again, thank you all for all your support. I think a lot of, there's been some real heavy big projects with Two Rivers and the code and. Um, I, I know we've always been appreciative that you have individually reached out with questions and have kind of. At least even if you didn't particularly vote for some things that you came together and I think our rivers have benefited from it. So, thank you.
Yeah. Great. And I, let me give one more shout out to, to um. Brendan Langenhuesen, I don't want to butcher his last name, but I think that's close, but he will be uh, termed out. As a commissioner and he's served and certainly has a lot of expertise and he really helped um. Work with Ashley too on bringing the commission back and getting it to be a very active and, and a successful commission that it is. So thank you for his service and uh. I also think Elise will be leaving after her term is up. So thank you very much to her also.
Yeah, and on that note, Shelley, I guess if, if you council know people out there in the community that you would think would be a good fit, definitely encourage them to apply. Because yeah, we have a couple, a couple of seats to fill. I know we've got, I think, one application in Trent. Uh, we're not past the due date, are we?
No, no, uh, one application in, but we also expect some folks to reapply that are able to, so.
Great. All right. Thank you so much. If there, if nobody has any other questions, I guess that's it. And we appreciate you being here. Have a great evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks. Deborah, what is next? Looks like we have Blake Street configuration, work session on that. So um. If everyone's here, I don't see Terry yet. Oh, there she is. I'll, I will turn it over to Terry, I think, and the engineering team, whoever will be here.
Yeah, Shelley, could you promote Jessica as well? She's um, actually going to do our presentation for us today.
It looks like she's there now.
Jessica got me.
Great. Thanks.
All right, let me get my screen share going. I know, good afternoon, everybody. I know a lot of you have seen this presentation. We tried to pare it down a little bit. For this meeting and focus on the main ideas here. Um, so we're going to go over the different alternatives. Um, we have an in-kind replacement, a one-way. An advisory bike lane and a two-way configuration. Advisory bike lanes are two-way configuration as well, but it's less formal. So the first alternative A is the replacement of Blake Street in kind. Um, we would actually need to widen Blake just slightly. Because right now it's too narrow to meet fire code. So we would widen it to 20 feet. It's the less, least impactful to the neighbors and the residents. Um, we wouldn't need to, to take right-of-way from anybody, but we also wouldn't be providing any improvement. Such as sidewalks or curb and gutter. We do have some improvements on 26th Street that are necessary for our curb and gutter and for the drainage out there. Um, there's a culvert that needs to be replaced, so that, that work would be a little more intensive. That road is in pretty bad shape at the moment. So the benefits and drawbacks of this alternative would be um. It's the lowest cost, it's the, the easiest for us to do. We don't have to get right-of-way. Um, and it does maintain our city circulation, has the least impact on neighbors from a construction standpoint. Um, the drawbacks are, it doesn't improve our drainage, it doesn't provide pedestrian facilities or bike facilities, and it doesn't have any traffic calming or improvements on Palmer.
Hey Jessica?
Yeah.
One thing that um, Paula asked was about the utilities in that road and um. There is um, there's an electric line that we would replace with our, um, with our crews between, I think Matt said 24th and Easy Street. So in terms of the utilities, he thought overall we were good, but um, we would do some, um, some work in-house. I just wanted to let the rest of the council know. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's overhead. Is he wanting to underground it or?
Yeah, that's my understanding is that he would drop that electric line.
Okay.
Would that be including broadband, Terry?
You know, I didn't ask Matt specifically about broadband. I would need to, need to double check on that.
Okay.
And I, I, yeah, Matt can speak to it more, but I would imagine whatever we do here, he'll probably get broadband on board to put in conduit if there isn't. Conduit already before we do any improvement.
And Jessica and Terry, is that considered kind of your baseline uh, minimal option?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Least costly, within our current budget, all of that good stuff.
And what's the budget on that? Was that on there, approximate?
Um, no, I don't, I, so the, the budget that the Blake Street improvements are in is actually lumped into uh. Multiple projects and, and Public Works is in the street department's budget. So there's like four or five um, projects that are lumped together.
Okay.
Um, so I'll move on. Alternative B is a one-way configuration. And this one's a little more complicated because there are different one-way configurations that have been thrown out there. Um. So the first option would be a one-way southbound from 23rd to 26th. Uh, we had a lot of pushback from this from the Palmer residents because this would send northbound traffic up to Palmer, which it already from our traffic count. Appears that, that traffic is going up to Palmer because they're trying to avoid Blake. Uh, or a one-way southbound from 26th to 27th. Uh, the Blake Avenue traffic northbound would be then forced back to State Highway 82 at 27th Street. 27th Street is a very short uh, roadway. We likely have some backup. Um, in really high congested times, our level of service at that signal is pretty poor. Um, along with the interaction with the Raptor station. And I imagine they could have some issues getting their buses in and out if we have increased traffic. Along with that, if we do have a high congestion period of time. Where we, the highway shut down and people are trying to get through town. It would likely increase the standing traffic in Blake because you would have traffic trying to get off State Highway 82. At the uh, marketplace and taking Blake to 27th and being forced back to 27th or back to State Highway 2 at 27th. Along with the people headed southbound on Blake, trying to like bypass that traffic on the highway as well. So when there's high congestion, traffic is slower, so it winds up creating more standing traffic in the neighborhood. Um, along with that. Someone heading northbound that may not be a local and tries to avoid the highway traffic would get to 27th. See all the way to 26th, which is in a very long block and ignore the one-way. They, they would just choose to, if there's nobody there, they would just, they could. Or might just ignore it. Um, and then the, the other option that staff has kind of thrown out there is. Doing a southbound through the old Blake location from New Palmer um, to the Walmart entrance. And narrowing it up there. Uh, EMS doesn't currently access through the gate. Um, so if they needed to, they could just go the wrong direction through there. Um, there was an emergency and it could cause a potentially lower level of service at 29th. We probably would have some increased turnarounds at Walmart. Uh, but this would be a better, in our, in staff's opinion, would be. A more ideal location because we wouldn't be affecting the level of service at 27th significantly. So this is kind of a visual of.
Jessica, sorry, explain that last option one more time. I, it's a new one.
It is. So if you look at this third, the third um, image here. This kind of shows you what that option is. So where this new Palmer access is coming from for the Bell Rippey development. We could one-way with a narrow road section like 10 feet, curb and gutter from Palmer to the Walmart entrance. Uh, it would be a little bit longer of a section than the 26th to 27th. And uh, it would be, it would, the roadway would actually be physically narrower, um, so that people would be less inclined to try to go the wrong way.
So Jessica, basically that is. Very similar to the southbound from 26th to 27th, but you're just moving it down to that other stretch.
Yeah, this was, yes, this is an idea that Matt threw out there because we wanted to. Wait, from 26th to 27th, we still have to maintain emergency services and we need to keep that 20-foot section. Along with that, there's parking there that. Makes it a little bit more complicated to make it a one-way. Uh, so Matt came up with this idea and, and I think most of us on staff, if we have to do a one-way. This would be a little bit of a better situation for the 27th Street signal.
Okay, so people could still turn at 27th and access, say, if they lived at Oakhurst. They could go up 27th, make that left and head north. Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, that was, that was our other concern was the Oakhurst residents are now being forced to go up, well, all of the residents are being forced to go up to 23rd to access their homes. If they're coming from uh, up down valley from Aspen. Uh, on 82, so it, it could let, potentially lower the level of service at that signal, which is pretty poor as well.
So they'd still be able to get into the back parking lot at Walmart from what you're showing me here, correct?
Yes, so it would be one-way southbound from Palmer to that rear, that rear entrance at Walmart. Um, which is why we could, during high congested times or tourists coming through would might try to go down Blake. Northbound and would get to the Walmart entrance and have to turn around. But I think our locals would figure it out pretty quickly. Do you have anything to add, Terry?
No, I think you did it perfectly. Um. I was just thinking one more, I guess analogy of the, of the second scenario of the southbound from 26th to 27th. Um, I did have a, a conversation with Jonathan and was kind of comparing that to being a cul-de-sac. Essentially, if people come off of 27th. You know, they end up at that intersection of 27th and Blake and then, you know, are forced to essentially turn back. Um, or, you know, to jump. You know, um, try to, to jump this one way, which, you know, we have in other parts of the town, um, you know. In particular on um, on Cooper Street, you know, where we have a short distance where people try to go the, the wrong direction just because they can see where they need to get to. Um, so that's my only thing to add.
The other concern is the, if, if that signal is backed up pretty significantly at 27th, people that are headed northbound might try to make a U-turn in the intersection. Um, and that could lead to some safety issues for them as well to get back to 29th or to the marketplace entrance.
Yeah. One more thing that I, I want to emphasize too is just that Raptus Park and Ride is at that intersection of 27th and State Highway 82. And they already have, um, you know, I guess it would be a, as. It's not an optimal entrance into 27th Street. So any traffic that we add to 27th, um, that, you know, potentially blocks them from being able to make that. Um, that left turn into their pocket and then continue further south. Uh, would impact their, their operations. So, um, you know. Creating more congestion at 27th is, is probably going to um, impact the, you know, the regional bus service.
Yeah, it's uh, 26 to 31 seconds for the westbound leg there. So. Um, any left turns that are taken up by cars, it could delay the bus service as well if they can't get in and out.
Yeah.
I think I pretty much covered all of the pros and cons. This is a, again, a lower magnitude. We're not really changing the section much. Um. We could do it within the right-of-way. The only concern here is if we lower the level of service at 27th too much. Then we might be forced to acquire more right-of-way and add another turn lane. Um, and CDA is. Not going to give us more time at that signal, so if we're just going to have to live with a pretty poor functioning intersection there. Am I right about that, Terry?
You know, I guess the only opportunity for additional signal timing there is through the um. The project that Raptus is working on now, the underpasses. Um, when they put the underpasses in. And they will be able to take the, the signal timing that would normally go to a pedestrian and um, you know. Hopefully allocate it to the side streets. And, you know, we, we still have to go through a process with CDA operations to um, make sure that that actually takes place and that. You know, it's not uh, reallocated to the main line, but that's um, that's our hope is that we can add some time to the side streets there.
I see Charlie has his hand up. Does he have a question?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Thanks. Um, you know, I, as you know, I'm a pro, keep moving my, somebody's low raising, lowering, I got it, okay. I, I think you guys know that I'm pretty much a proponent of one-way, south, uh, northbound. Southbound between 26th and 27th. And I, I listened to what you guys are saying and I really respect the work you guys are doing, but I just disagree fundamentally with the concept. Um, and I don't think moving it downward, Matt suggested solves that problem. We have to protect the East Glenwood neighborhood and. You know, when you talk about the, the downside to this, you have people who could certainly go to 29th Street, they don't have to use 27th Street. And people are going to learn where they can get out on Grand Avenue. And are you going to have people that might violate the one-way? Sure, that's certainly a possibility, but. It, I think it's going to cut down the general traffic is, um, and if we get a, if we find out it's being done on a regular basis and we. Put the, the police out there for a few weeks and that'll, that'll adapt that behavior. When I moved up to this valley. When I moved up to this valley many, many years ago, you go into Aspen at the beginning of the Esther Curse. You still go straight and it was always great for me because it went right down to the courthouse and a lot of local people did it. Aspen eliminated that. And sure, it takes me a little bit longer to get to the courthouse, but I I deal with that. I don't go on the side streets. And that really reduced, and I remember this being in the papers up in Aspen, the amount of. Transient traffic such as myself going to the courthouse through local neighborhoods. Yeah, and I think. I don't think you're, you're pick, you're emphasizing enough the long-term benefits to. The citizens on the east side of the of the town by not allowing. Um, people and and the the issue we're worried about here is the people coming in. Granted, I think it's backed up. They gotta turn somewhere to get onto Blake. And they're doing it now, and if you improve Blake, they're gonna do it even more. They're gonna go up twenty-seventh, they're gonna get on Blake, they're gonna make the Esther and get on Blake and continue on all the way down to to. Uh, eleventh, tenth, ninth, or whatever, where they think they can get back into Grand Avenue and avoid all that backup traffic. I think we have to do everything we can to discourage that. Um, and so. I I I really rarely disagree with staff and their recommendation, but this is one. I just disagree with. I think you're. Well, I'll leave it at that. I I could, I just think it's a wrong thing to do. I think we have a duty to our citizens to keep the passenger traffic out. And and people will learn twenty-seventh Street won't become backed up because they'll go to twenty-ninth or they'll go to McDonald's. And and if they need to get out, they're gonna find ways to get out of that that area. And I'm not worried about the tourists because if they're gonna come in, they're gonna be going down Grand Avenue, go to Walmart or the uh. Murdochs or whatever might be out there they wanna go to. I'm not worried about that. I wanna, I think I'm worried about, I think the biggest problem we have is to. Um, minimize the impact of the passive people coming through town wanting to get out to. Um, Newcastle and and rifle and silt it because they don't wanna send traffic for that extra twenty minutes, so. I guess I've said what I can say.
Thanks, Charlie. Paula?
Sorry, mute, yes. Sorry, um, I'm. You know, I'm there with Charlie, but really what I look at, even when I look through these plans and I keep trying to keep an. Open head and an open heart about this, um, this is my ward. Uh, and um, I know the traffic patterns down here. I don't have um. A a line running across the streets, but I see how um, traffic has impacted the area. And really what I'm concerned about is. Safety of our citizens. Um, we're looking at efficiency and traffic flow and what we need into the future, but. We're taking a street um, built in the sixties and seventies and um. No shopping center at the end of it, and now we're trying to accommodate, um, that was like sixties and seventies, and now we're trying to accommodate two thousand twenty. Traffic and. Um, we need to protect these families in these neighborhoods. There's no sidewalks. It's great that, you know, we can widen it to twenty feet, but we're not gonna take any white right-of-way, but. There's no, nothing to keep those kids off the streets and I see how that pattern goes. People park on the side, families, kids, bike riders all ride on the street side. Um, and walk on the street side of those cars. We have to do, if we're gonna make this big of a change in this neighborhood. We have to put the um, money into first-thinking pedestrians and bicyclists and safety and and how we take care of those and. I know you, there's a number of options.
Paula. I, I'm not, I don't wanna cut you off, but I I would really like to, we've got a limited time on work session here and. Staff is only uh, just getting into their presentation, so can we limit it to questions right now? And let them get through the presentation before we get into comments, into our full comments. Would that be okay?
Sure, I was just.
I I apologize. I thought, I thought that's where we were too, so I thought we were comments, I apologize.
I don't think they're done yet. I think there's a few more slides, so. Quick question on this, or can we keep going?
Sorry, I was picking up the lead thinking we were at questions, so no, let's keep going and we'll do comments at the end.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks. Um, so yeah, the benefits, it lowers volume, discourages State Highway two traffic from bypassing. It is a lower cost option. There's not a good way to peg this down because it really does depend on. How long of a stretch is one-way, where the one-way is and what traffic calming options are are selected. Um. You could potentially add a sidewalk, again, depending on where it is and and what kind of right-of-way we have. And we could convert it to another design if it's not successful since we still have to facilitate that twenty feet. Um, to get through there for EMS.
Jessica.
The other.
Oh, sorry. Can I ask one question on the one-way? Um, you have on drawbacks that says bicycle traffic would oppose the vehicular traffic. It was. I was always under the impression that bicycles had to follow the traffic laws, and if you have a one-way street, they're not allowed to ride down it the wrong way. Can you?
So, yeah, so that's the catch-22 here is that this is our bike route. This is a designated bike route for the city. And. If we're telling that people that this is a bike route, you know, there's nowhere else for them to go. They they can only get to the Marketplace on Blake, so. I, either, yeah, we have to enforce a, that they're following the traffic laws and that they have to follow the one-way and then they have no. No way to get back north or. They are opposing traffic.
Okay, so we need a solution to that too. Okay.
Yeah, and obviously, as as engineers, it does lower our city circulation. There are less options for people to choose. Um, and it increases congestion in other locations. Um, it will potentially increase Palmer traffic and backup from the neighborhood and limit. Raptor access depending on the option chosen. Um, the other thing we need to consider is twenty-ninth is slated for a three-quarter movement, so that's a. You can take a left on the twenty-ninth from State Highway eighty-two, or you could do a right-out. You can't do a left-out. But right now, that's a pretty large roadway with a large intersection and it's not regulated. Uh, and I, I do have a feeling that if we were, do a one-way and we limit the traffic there. That we will have to do something to address that because I think people will start making riskier. Uh, movements and try to take a left turn across the highway there uh, when they shouldn't be, and it it could be a safety issue. So I'm not gonna read through all of the public feedback. I know these were in the um, the packet, but.
Jessica, can I, I apologize, I just. I looked at, could you go back a slide for a second? You down here in the bottom right, you're talking about, there's a look, they're talking about changing the twenty-ninth Street. Can you explain that? I, maybe you said it, I missed it.
Yeah, so the access control plan that C-DOT and the city put together, the the twenty-ninth is supposed to be a three-quarter movement, so it's supposed to be. A left or right in from State Highway two, but only a right out. And right now, it's an unregulated intersection. It's, it's just a, it's an open pavement, so people can make any, it's a whole movement.
And Charlie, we adopted the.
Go ahead, Terry.
We adopted that access control plan back in like twenty-fourteen or something like that and. You know, C-DOT um, puts together those kinds of plans, um, you know, all over the state really and to. Uh, try to consolidate accesses and eliminate, um, you know, some of the safety issues that they see. So, um, we do have one here and, um, you know, so far we really haven't had a lot of um. Need to um, really enforce the access control plan, but the state does have the ability. To come in and put medians and, you know, those kinds of things to to um, force the, um, force that movement.
Okay, thank you. We would want to.
Ingrid has a question, sorry. Ingrid, do you wanna ask your question? You're muted. Good, okay.
That was from earlier, when I had said I just wanted to talk. So you know what, for the time being, I'm gonna lower my hand and then when we allow Jessica to get to the end of her presentation. I'll get it back, okay?
Okay, Paula, quick question?
Quick question. So, um, on this uh. Twenty-ninth Street, I'm I'm a little confused because people take left-hand turns. Out of all those businesses all along that road. So are you saying none of those? That access that people are taking right now is actually illegal? Anything from Copy Copy Factory Outdoors, Takerio El Nepal, Napa Auto? We have, we, that's a, that's, that's a business neighborhood and.
Yeah, so, so those are. In the access control plan, those are each their own access, so I'm not even looking at those. I I think a lot of them are actually supposed to be right-in, right-out. Um, once they redevelop. This is only for the twenty-ninth Street intersection.
But at this point in time, they are allowed to take a left-hand turn out of twenty-ninth Street, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Up until the time that they redevelop.
Okay.
All right, so the the biggest concern. Is the backup of traffic in the Palmer depending on the configuration. The one that we threw out there was the the twenty-third to, or twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth. One-way, um, when we originally discussed it with the neighborhood. Um, so that's where I think that concern came from. We did not, I don't, Terry, I don't remember there being too many Oakhurst residents. Um, there were a couple that were in the meeting. I, I don't know. What their concern would be about getting to their. Um, home during, if there was a one-way from twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh, but I I imagine they might have some concern over that.
Yeah, essentially, we'd be channelizing all of those neighbors to twenty-third. That would be, or I guess they could access on twenty-fourth. But um, twenty-third, twenty-fourth would then become their primary access into their homes. If they were traveling from the southbound to the north, so we'd be taking all of that traffic and moving into those intersections.
And one of the comments was putting planters on both sides of the, of Blake. Um, I think we tried planters in the right-of-way and that was not a successful experiment and they were quickly removed, so. Curb and gutter or something like that would definitely be a lot better. Um, and then the alternative fee was this advisory bike lane um, idea. There's a lot of guidance that this could be a good solution for this neighborhood. It does provide pedestrian facilities. Technically, all the users are equal users. Um, including pedestrians and bicyclists, and everyone has to take their turn. I know a lot of the public concern with this winds up being that it it could be confusing, but when I reached out to um. Ontario about their pilot program, it seemed to go really well. They actually didn't get their advertising out to the neighborhood or to the residents. Um, for like over a week and after it had already been installed and ninety percent or more of the users. Figured it out. Um, it's pretty intuitive when there aren't. I, even in my neighborhood, there's no centerline striping in the, in the roadway. So when there's not a centerline stripe, people naturally just wanna drive in the middle. They wanna avoid all the cars. They wanna avoid anybody parking. Um, on the street. So I have a little bit of a section here that kind of shows. Um, what we would do at intersections and then where it would be everywhere else. This is a little bit more um. More in-depth and it would be more work for this neighborhood. Um, we would have to widen the roadway a little bit. Um, in the intersections to be able to facilitate those, those protective movements for the pedestrians and the bicyclist.
Jessica, would, are those advisory bike lanes, are they raised a little bit or could they be? Or are they typically not?
They're typically not. You could, um, but it could be a drainage issue. Where I think personally, and I think Terry agrees, where they're most successful is where you use colored asphalt. And you make the the advisory bike lane like a a bright color, like a green or a red or something in the asphalt. Which isn't a significant added cost to the asphalt cost and you only do it in the top lift of the asphalt, so. Um, I think they look, they're very visually um, constricting when you're driving down them. And this layout is not, you know, in stone. It was just, uh, for an example, to show people. What it could look like. And then a little bit of a sketch of what it might look like. So where those, the bike striping is, you could do that in a red or a green. Um, traditionally, uh, bike lanes are green. And then. I, if we do this on Blake, I would propose that we do it on Palmer just so it's consistent. Um, whereas Palmer's already got a pretty large roadway. So it would mostly be some striping unless we wanted to mill and overlay with a colored asphalt um, in the future depending on the budget. And then twenty-sixth Street. I did throw in. Um. A little mini roundabout at the intersection of twenty-sixth and uh Blake. I don't. I don't know, you know, that's not, that was just an idea that was thrown out there and I think a lot of the residents were curious about the mini roundabout. So the the benefits are definitely that the bicyclists and the pedestrians and cars are all equal users. Um, this is a, a lower cost, it's a narrower section, minimal material. Um, depending on if you use colored pavement and what kind of striking you install. It maintains our two-way circulation through the city. Um, it still facilitates our missing bike connection because we technically don't have bike lanes or pedestrian sidewalks um, out there. And then if it's not successful, you can always mill the colored asphalt and pave it and put a centerline stripe down the road. If we needed to, hopefully not. Uh, and then this doesn't consider drainage. It doesn't give pedestrians a protected space, which is unfortunate. I know ideally all pedestrians would like to be out of the roadway. It also doesn't have on-street parking, and that was one of the concerns that um, EMS, the the fire department was. Had would be that if people would start parking on the street and narrowing up that road, but I think colored asphalt would help uh. Keep that from happening. And then the education part and signage, but technically it's pretty intuitive, so. It would be a little bit of outreach and then some monitoring to see how successful it is. And then this is the feedback we got from the residents from the neighborhood meeting. Um, again, it's, it's the same concern we have pretty much with any two-way configuration. That's problematic during State Highway eighty-two backup. Uh, and then the education part and not being able to protect the pedestrians, I think, were the, the bigger concern. But they, they all agreed that the, well, most everyone thought that this would slow traffic down, so. Then the last option, which I actually thought was gonna be the more favorable for everyone, was a two-way um, with a raised path. And I put the raised path on the north side of the road just for drainage, um, to keep water heading down, but. It seemed like this was less preferable. I think people were concerned about. Um, keeping cars off of the raised path, not parking on it. Um, the fact that it was asphalt and not a concrete sidewalk with curb and gutter. And I kept the similar configuration with the mini roundabout here at twenty-sixth. Kind of what it looked like. You could also do the raised path in um, colored asphalt, but the other concern with this is I only put a three-inch. A three-inch difference between the roadway and the asphalt or the path because. That way bicyclists come on and off the road to avoid pedestrians. Um, pretty easily without uh, having to hop a curb or something like that, but. It seemed like our bike users weren't a fan of that and they, it wasn't preferable. And then the same alternative on Palmer where we would uh, raise that asphalt up uh, with a lift. So that, the benefit I saw was that it's a vertical separation from cars. It does give the cyclist an option to be or be on the roadway or on the path. It is a lower cost, um, and it does maintain that two-way circulation and facilitate the bike connection. But the separation is mountable and that could lead to some tripping hazards. Um, we need to address the drainage. There's no on-street parking. And if we wanted to convert it, we would have to mill and reconfigure at some point. So the residents were concerned about improving the roadway and keeping the two-way circulation. And having more cut-through traffic and nobody liked it. Pretty much nobody liked it.
Okay, Jessica, I think Jonathan has a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't know if you guys can hear me. I'm driving. Well, someone else is driving. What is the fundamental difference or is there a a significant difference between a three-inch asphalt? Raised platform and like in a lot of parts of the city, we do have sidewalks that. raised platform and like in a lot of parts of the city, we do have sidewalks that have mountable curbs or roundabouts or or areas where there's tight turn radiuses, I think we have mountable curves, are they, do they kind of function similar?
Yeah, it would function pretty similar. Um, the only difference between having a mountable curb is that it's more visually, it stands out visually. Uh, so and I think most of, unless it's in a driveway, our mountable curbs are six inches, which is a more significant drop-off, um, whereas this would be a tapered three-inch lip. And it, you would, unless you did a colored asphalt, it would be harder to see, or striped it, I guess, you could try, definitely.
Jonathan, are you still there?
I am, yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not so far, thanks, guys.
Okay, thanks. Uh, anybody else? Chris, or do you want to go ahead and finish up, Jessica? Great.
Yeah, I think this is the last, the last bit of it. So it did seem that the neighborhood wanted to, wanted, preferred the one-way southbound from twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh. Transportation Commission recommended that as well. Um, city staff in general doesn't support that configuration, we do think it'll lead to some long-term issues with the signal at twenty-seventh, um, along with some circulation issues with that neighborhood. And without, without accurate count, having this road a two-way, there's no real metric to to see how it actually performs, there's nothing to compare it to. Um, and then if we do I have an echo. If we do a one-way, um, staff does prefer the the one-way from the new Palmer Avenue to Walmart. We think this will lead to less issues at twenty-seventh Street and the other intersection. Um, but of course, staff supports maintaining full function of all of our public roadways and maintaining two-way traffic. Um, we would always prefer to have a sidewalk or or the advisory bike lane option.
I would add that, you know, um, I really um support the idea, I guess, now and in the future of adding traffic calming to our roadway projects. Uh, because I feel like, you know, this is probably um one of our more contentious issues right now, but you know, we have been reconstructing our um neighborhood streets as we are moving, you know, moving through and even on, um, you know, neighborhood streets where we don't have cut-through traffic, you know, we we still have some, you know, complaints about speeding and neighborhood character and those kinds of things. And anytime that um we can add traffic calming to it, as opposed to, you know, start setting up um, one-ways, I feel like, you know, we we meet two goals, we still preserve the neighborhood character, we lower speeds, and we, you know, allow for full circulation, so um you know, without, um, you know, given um the proper funding, I think we should do that, you know, everywhere.
Okay, and I'll tag on to what Terry said, that, you know, in the original presentation, I had all the different traffic calming options, and it seems like everyone in the neighborhood prefers speed tables. Um, but there are other traffic calming options, we can do chicanes, we can do um mumble or um mountable medians that are tactile and deter people from going high speeds, and and that's something I tried to emphasize, that if if we do traffic calming correctly, it should deter that cut-through traffic. Obviously, if we have something like a fire where there's just congestion everywhere, it's not going to fix that. But for the most part, for the commuter traffic, if we do traffic calming correctly, people wouldn't be able to speed through that neighborhood, which seems to be the biggest concern.
Okay, and that was, that was one of my questions, Jessica, just leading into that. In that option with those um advisory bike lanes, would we be able to do bulbout, say, on Blake, right near twenty-sixth and Blake, to really choke down that kind of entrance into that area? Do you, maybe you're showing that, but where you had a traffic circle, maybe as an option for the traffic circle?
So I do have, I show a median near the traffic circle, and that's, that could be a a mountable tactile median, we could do a a small chicane or something. The biggest thing here is we have a pretty decent amount of drainage that comes here to this and what, and maintain that, the bulbouts are kind of hard to get drainage around sometimes, and that would be an engineering. We could figure it out, we could put in curb chases or something if we wanted to do something like that.
Okay, well, are you guys um at a good spot? Can we open it up to more questions and comments?
Yep.
Okay, okay, how about uh for letting us get through the full presentation, and now let's open it up for council discussion and comments, questions. Ingrid.
Okay, awesome. Um, so more than anything, I, you know, as always, thank you for looking at this from so many different perspectives. Um, my first inclination, when I looked at it, and I hear your recommendation, I see the practicality of it. Um, from an engineering perspective and all of those things, but from a community position, I'm I'm very inclined to to agree with the Transportation Commission as well as the community, although I do feel like getting just twelve respondents is a little lean to get a a nice comprehensive feel for what really is the gauge on the community members. Um, so with that in mind, I would be more inclined to close it from, or to to change it to a one-way from twenty-third to twenty-sixth. Um, I think inevitably, that makes it even quieter, even if it's both directions from twenty-sixth to twenty-seventh. Um, but I would definitely be a proponent of one of the three one-way um configurations. That's a sense, that's a community, um, it's a community that is growing, and I think that the type of growth that they're going to see has a lot of, uh, maybe a younger demographic, young kids' walkability. Um, it's really important that the proximity to the raft station be recognized, and just knowing that there's going to be a lot of people on bikes, on foot. Um, I also, one last comment, um, is just to say that we are in dialogue about increasing density. Um, so just an increase in density and maybe allowing other units, and I know that's a dialogue that we haven't, you know, it's very much in its infancy. But if that is the case, all of that area around there, they're not in, it's not a subdivision, there's no limitations, they can have ADUs, they can have multifamily, we we potentially have a lot more people there, and I want it to have a sense of community, and I think that one-way streets inevitably are maybe one of the strongest forms of traffic calming that we can, that we can include. Um, so those are just all my thoughts.
Okay, Charlie. Thanks, Ingrid.
Yeah, I I'm good, I think I've commented, I think, I was going to add to kind of respond to what Ingrid just said, what is it? Problem of doing twenty-third, fourth, or twenty-third to twenty-sixth is, it's going to push the people on the Palmer um, in that, in that really impacts the Palmer neighborhood, that doesn't solve, in my view, that pasture traffic.
Okay, thanks, Charlie. Paula.
Um, so, but ditto to my comments before. Um, just protecting the the people that live there, I appreciate what uh Ingrid just added as far as increased depth, density and increased foot traffic, which was what we're asking for. Um, one of my other concerns on um this it it that I think needs to be addressed is if we go with one of these plans that included either the the bike pathways on both sides or the single bike pathway, we're pulling, we're taking away parking, and we just approved a development, the council did um in that neighborhood with less parking um waivers given to them, so they didn't have to provide as much parking, and that was one of the concerns is where are those people going to park if they have more than one-point-five cars? Those streets are already filled with cars that are parked on the side to accommodate the buildings that are there, so I think we really need to address that, and maybe that is um, how do we, you know, maybe we need a parking garage on this side of town, who knows? But we need to look at that when we, when we say we're going to take away parking on these streets. Um, again, my biggest concern um is is taking care of the people walking and biking in these neighborhoods um, and and accommodating them first and making sure they're safe. If we pass something in two or three years from now, we have somebody who has killed in a traffic pedestrian accident or a car bicycle accident, um, it's going to come back to this council on why we let this happen. Um, so I just really caution us to move forward with with a plan that understands the need um for change, but also understands the need that it's neighborhood-first. And uh, we're taking care, taking care of a a person um, who is not a car, um, is not equal, a person is not equal to a car in an in an accident, so. So th- those are the things that concern me um as we look at these changes.
Thank you, Paula. Ingrid, do you still have your hand up, would you? Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to follow up on Charlie's comment that he felt like it would push traffic up on Palmer and say that I don't know that that's actually the case. Um, it's one thing for someone to try to go one street off a main thoroughway, but I don't necessarily believe that someone would inherently and on a regular basis go four blocks off a main thoroughway. Um, I think that if we try to use when the bridge was closed as precedent, I don't think that that's an appropriate comparison, I mean, people were going over Cottonwood Pass and coming through the canyon. Such an extreme difference in just the number of people and the, in the constriction. Um, I believe that in this scenario, people, you know, there may be an occasional rogue car, but I don't think that it would be as significant a push as we might see. And then the last thing is, is, and this kind of echoes Paula's, is that there is a safety concern, and I think that people um, especially if if, like Jessica said, this is on our bike path, we need to honor that, and we need to make sure that that is a safe route for people to be on bikes. And then lastly, gosh, if I'm going to do this all night, I'm going to be the chatterbox tonight. Um, my last comment is just that if if we do it, like you guys have even indicated, if we do it initially as a one-way and it's not working, we can convert it, and that's one of, you know, easily converted to another design. Um, but it definitely gives us an opportunity to see how it works with that, the one-way design.
Jessica, did you want to comment?
Yeah, just quickly, we did take counts of the existing condition for Blake and Palmer. And it does indicate that people are already going up to Palmer to avoid Blake, there's actually more traffic on Palmer than there is on Blake existing, and it's not exactly a thoroughfare, because you're still turning right to get back on the Blake um on twenty-third, so going left is kind of the same, about the same distance. Uh, so I don't know, again, it goes back to, there's no real metrics here for us to compare to, because there's not two-way traffic through Blake right now, there's the gate closed. So it's really hard to make that comparison, and I think when I looked at the numbers and talked to Terry about it, kind of, it does seem that a lot of that traffic may be a lot of the Valley View employees coming across the bridge um, from Four Mile neighborhood to get to work or something like that, because um, they are going up Palmer right now.
Thanks, Jessica. Um, let's see. Jen.
Hi, y'all, I just wanted to remind everybody um that we are in the midst of um developing the development agreement with the Bell Rippey folks, and so um they have committed, they have drawn their drawings with uh the Blake open and that being two-way. And um, my understanding is that that there's some commitment to having some traffic calming that is on that section that is north of twenty-seventh. Um, and so now is really the time um for those things to be in that agreement. And a- and certainly, we can always re-reconfigure the roadways in the future. Um, but there, that will be at our cost.
Okay, thanks, Jen, that's a good point.
I just wanted to follow up on that, Jen, we thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, like, we have it on the agenda tonight, but it can slip for one meeting, and we'll still be in line, because we wanted to, we're not trying to rush you.
Okay.
An accurate statement, Jen?
I think so, I mean, we're in the process of reviewing those construction drawings. Um, so the the development agreement and the construction drawings are kind of simultaneous, and then once that is is completed, they would have that full entitlement and could move forward with applying for a building permit.
Okay, so we have time, what I'm hearing is we might have time to, if if council wants a little more information or some other questions answered, we can maybe push this off to the next meeting, the decision.
But not much beyond that, um, we're in the the process of that, and um, you know, we did give them the the developers' comments on their fifty percent drawings, so they have a feeling that we're moving forward in one direction. Um, and so they, you know, there may be some unhappiness on the other end of that one, if we ask them to do something that is radically different.
Okay, okay, thanks, Jen. Um, Charlie?
Sorry, just wanted to clarify, you just said, Jen, um what what decision do you need from us that relates to the, the, I still got the Bell Rippey development, I apologize, give her the new developers, what what do you need from us?
Well, it's on our I, go ahead, Jen.
I was just going to say, the piece that they are, that that they have drawn, their piece that they are going to construct of Blake, because they have to be in the roadway um, to do connections for utilities in various uh curb and gutter, they have a sidewalk requirement, there's other things that they have to do. So they have given us drawings for their section of Blake that is two-way traffic with the, with the um gate open. Um, it does have a median, and Terry's going to be able to give you all the details, because I didn't, I have, I didn't spend as much time with the plans as she did or Jessica did. Um, but, so they have drawn their section of Blake in a particular way. If you make a different decision, then, you know, and and certainly after they have submitted that, you know, we've finalized our construction drawings. Um, and we've given them the, you know, the development agreement that has all of those things in it. If we change our minds, then it will, you know, there, that would, that would be our decision, so our
So maybe our cost impact, is what you're saying.
Impact, and they also have some, they have a commitment as part of that, that entitlement to some traffic calming that is in the section that's from twenty-seventh to uh, and Terry may have to help me, I think twenty-fourth or twenty-third.
Okay.
Was a one-way configuration contemplated.
Okay. Um, Ingrid. Thanks, Jen.
You know, actually, I think I'm all set.
Okay, Paula? Thanks, Ingrid.
Just get, um, Jen, is, even if we're looking at this tonight or looking at it two weeks from now, could we get a visual of what they're project, it's, you know, we're trying to make this decision, and we're seeing all these drawings from Jessica and from Terry, and then now it's like, oh, well, wait, we're already seeing some stuff from the developer, we have no idea what we're looking at. Um, so how can we make a decision on this one side when we don't know what the other side looks like? And especially now that I realize you're saying it it goes into all the way possibly to twenty-fourth Street, I mean, um, it's a, is there any way to see?
I think Jessica has that drawing, she can bring it up for us.
Yeah, I can, I can bring up the drawing of what they proposed. It honestly, what they propose is insignificant to this conversation, because it it's just a two-way configuration, we have a speed table. Um, it'll take me a few minutes to pull it up um for a crossing to the raft station and then a speed table at the end where the, near where the gate is, and a median. Um, and they haven't proposed any traffic calming, and I think wherever that winds up being between twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh, um, that was up to us to decide, and they have some obligation for a financial contribution, from what I understand. So they haven't proposed any of that stuff, that's up to us.
Okay, but so right now, they're doing something at twenty-seventh and something where they exit the development, basically.
Yeah, let me, I can pull it up here, if you give me a couple minutes. Yeah, let me, I can pull it up here if you give me a couple of minutes.
One decision that would affect the developer is if we decided to, you know, we had two one-way configurations. One one-way configuration that went from 23rd essentially to 26th and then one one-way configuration that went from 26th to 27th. And then city staff said, you know, if we were going to do a one-way, we would prefer a one-way from where the development connects with Palmer back towards Walmart. And that would be the only, if the, the council chose that, that option, then that would change our, our interaction with the developer. Otherwise, every other option is doable, you know, outside of that particular one-way. So.
Okay, can I, can I, a couple of hands up in our attendees? Jonathan is one of them. If, I don't know if he can be promoted. And then Murray Reynolds, that might be Diane. This is a work session just for our attendees, so we do not take public comment during this session. But if you'd like to be on, we do have a discussion on this on our regular agenda later on this evening. So if you'd like to comment during that time, we can take public comment during that time. But thank you for being on. So Jonathan, while you're looking for that, oh.
Yeah, I'm here. I got kicked off real quick, and so I think I got most of it. So this question's been ever for staff is, you know, I, I don't, right now, 27th to 23rd is a two-way. And so it's functions as two-way. And I don't know what our traffic counts are. I don't know if we've done a lot of traffic counts, but I don't see people, just, you know, again, this is just my visual observation, but I don't see people, commuters, taking a ride on 27th Street and going up to Blake currently to then cut Highway 82 traffic. And so I guess one of, you know, if we did make it one-way, either between 23rd and 26th or 26th and 27th, it's essentially like moving the Blake Gate just a little bit farther, except now you've made a new condition. Because right now, I can go across Highway 82 to 27th Street, go over on Blake public.
Jonathan? We're breaking up. We're losing you. Can we? Can we have this conversation possibly later? Because we're losing you. You're breaking up. Jessica, you have your figure up. Why don't you go ahead and speak to Paula's question?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. There's a, a speed table here and another speed table here with crossings. This one is to get, to help get cyclists up on, or yeah, cyclists up onto the sidewalks since there's not bike lanes down here. Eventually, I think we can fit bike lanes down by Walmart, but yeah, and it's two-way. This is what they've proposed so far.
Jessica, can you point out the path to them?
Yeah, so there's, let me zoom out a little bit. So right now we have a five-foot sidewalk that heads towards Walmart and continues down Blake. And then they're putting in an eight-foot sidewalk on the north side. And then there's a, I think this was five foot, five or six foot on the south side here that Rafta put in at their BRT.
Yes, is the, what way that staff was proposing, would that be on the left side to the right here? Is that?
It would be from this Palmer Avenue to, essentially where the Blake Gate is now or just to the Walmart entrance somewhere in there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and we would, and we would propose that, like, with a 10-foot section of roadway. So it would be a, there, it would be a, a one-way, truly one-way. It wouldn't be a 20-foot section. Whereas everywhere else, we would have to do a 20-foot section for EMS.
Okay, so it is five, just about 5:15. I want to give, I have a few comments I'd like to make, but I'll give any other counselors or Deborah, if you have comments, we can kind of wrap up the work session so that we can have dinner. And then we'll, we'll come back to this later on, on our agenda this evening. Deborah?
I have, the mayor asked me to, his comment was, doesn't the one-way force traffic on the 82? My question is for tonight, I've told Terry and Jessica prepare to do the same presentation again for the public, and I just wanted to make sure you guys were behind that. Okay.
Yep, that sounds good. And seeing no other hands up, I'll, I'll just comment that, you know, I, I fully appreciate, this is a really complicated area we're looking at. And I totally agree with the comments from Paula and Charlie and Ingrid that we're dealing with a neighborhood here and it's really critical that we get it right. That being said, I do have concerns about the one-way primarily because I, I know residents both on Blake and Palmer. And there is definitely that concern and it sounds like there's some reality to traffic being routed and wanting to go up to Palmer. And it's really only one other block up. So I'm also really concerned about the bike route because Blake is a designated bike route all the way. You know, it's one of our major bike routes in the city to connect people down to the Roaring Fork Marketplace and through those neighborhoods. And we have bike lanes striped on Blake Avenue in the, you know, north of 23rd, which did help calm the traffic a little bit, even just putting those bike lanes on the wider roadway. So I, I'm concerned if we don't have a solution to that in one of these one-way scenarios, then we are cutting off that bikeway. And unless we build a bike, a specific bike lane and allow people to go against the one-way street, they're technically, they're breaking the law. So are we going to create that kind of situation on a street in our town? So I'm, I'm tending to really want to give the, something like the advisory bike lanes. I think it's great that staff is proposing we do it on Blake and Palmer because then we're really addressing that whole neighborhood and trying to prove the bike and pedestrian. But I want to see enough traffic calming in there that, you know, as a commuter, you would never want to go that way. You might try it once, but you'll never try it again, you know, and, and. So anyway, that's my comment and we'll, we'll see where this goes. I, I really just think it's important that we, we don't impact those neighborhoods. You know, I, I live on a street that's a residential street and we have huge impacts from tourist traffic because if just, I happen to have a tourist attraction right across the street and there's a lot of traffic and a lot of parking and it's ongoing all year. So we all have the impacts and, and feel it and we can't mitigate all of those, but we can do our best to keep the speed down, you know, the 15 mile per hour speed limit. But seeing that traffic calming in there too, I think is really important. So that's, that's where I'm at and I'm open to us working out the best solution here. So with that, any other comments? Okay, we'll, we'll see everybody back here at, what about five after six? Or 10 after, so we can start the meeting at 6:15.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, everybody.